The one that Britt wrote.
Mm-hmm.
It's in.
Okay.
I just had.
And everything is live, so we are good to go. Little when you are ready.
Yes, sir.
If you'll join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings that you give us, Lord. We ask for safety for our citizens and for our first responders today as we are experiencing our storms. Lord, we ask that you watch over our area as we continue to have weather. And, Lord, we just lift you up. Lift up our commissioners today as they conduct the county business. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Let's leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey. First item. We'll call it order. First item is pretty massive, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
I would make a motion for approval for them.
Maybe I'm pushing all those.
Aye. I have the following eight estates up for final settlement. One, Terry and Tony, Derek Kidd, Anna Otmer Looney, Layuna Brown Rapp, Catherine Jane Harris, Austin Daryl Cornwell, Andy Earl Brown, Sherry Jane Weitner, and Hilda Pratt. All the states are in order.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the settlement of estates presented.
I say move.
All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Exonerations, county splits, consolidations. We have. List of.
Six.
The property exonerations and. As provided by the. Sessions.
Yep. I'll make a motion for approval for the. Four exonerations and two enforcers as presented.
Okay. We get a motion to approve all those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Financial approval from. Banks and Rec Transfer.
And the following Archie Red Transfer from savings to checking libraries, one thousand one hundred sixty one dollars and seventeen cents. For twenty four, twenty five orders of first quarter reimbursement. Meadow River Trail, four thousand two hundred fifty eight dollars and thirty one cents. That's consulting partial AML reimbursement. Greenberry Valley Corral, one thousand six hundred seventy five dollars. For twenty four, twenty five program and concert series. That's a total of seven thousand ninety four dollars and forty eight cents from savings to checking.
And we have a motion to transfer seven thousand one hundred ninety four dollars and forty eight cents from savings to checking to cover the courses.
I'll make a motion to approve Archie's transfer.
All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Budget.
I have two budget revisions. The first one is to increase emergency services contributions transfers other government entities, seven eleven five sixty seven. Of four thousand seventy five dollars and one cent. And that reflects the total amount of deposits that went into the general fund from the Washington State Treasury for reimbursements from our four grant causes through our LEPC. Second one was to increase general accounts, seven hundred five sixty seven to five hundred dollars and fifty cents. And as for the other monthly deputy sheriff uniform fees payment for January.
We have a motion to approve the budget.
So move.
All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And transfer.
We have one line item transfer. Need to increase four twenty five to eleven. That's other buildings total earned by ten thousand dollars. Decrease four twenty five to fifteen other buildings maintenance and repairs by ten thousand.
Okay. And we can approve one item transfer.
Say move.
All those favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Pay the bills. We're here in front of. Probably have the invoices for both the utilities and our invoices for the last couple of weeks. And I'll make a motion that we pay the bills as presented. And they've all been looked at by Lieutenant Fisher. Yeah. All those favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. We've just considered consideration of payment of resolution number ten for Route sixty east sewer project. That's a part of the White Silver Springs sewer project. Yes, is that you?
It is. Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we're hearing.
As reference, we have for your consideration today, regulation ten for the Route sixty east sewer improvement project. This is through estimate number seven from your plan of contracting construction contract for the project. In the amount of one hundred seventy nine thousand, seven hundred seven dollars and five cents. This also includes invoice number ten for E.L. Robinson for their construction administration and project inspection to date. Totaling thirteen thousand, five hundred sixty nine dollars and forty one cents. All invoices combined total one hundred ninety three thousand, two hundred seventy six dollars and forty six cents of which is requested of the tip funding.
We have a motion to approve the payment of these funds from the tip. Tip fund.
So move.
All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do you need this, Rob?
Yeah, I need to get the names. I couldn't hear the names in the beginning. I'll get it back to you after.
Okay. Number two, city recommendation of award subject to the results of bid opening for the White Silver Springs sewer project disinfection system improvement for the sewer project.
So the bid opening was held for that project. And the previous estimate prior to bidding was a total project cost of six hundred twenty seven thousand five hundred with the bids in hand. The project actually being a little under budget at six hundred nine thousand, one hundred and two dollars. The engineering firm still has to formally make this recommendation to the city for their acceptance. So what we would ask of the commission is to consider approving this award contention also under the city's acceptance. And I think what we did last time for the Route sixty east project was the commission prepared like a granted remit kind of solidifying the total project amount, what would be utilized from the tip funds. And then also did a resolution. I would imagine, you know, you probably want to do something similar for this project as well. And if all of this looks acceptable to you, perhaps that something that can be considered at your next meeting in February.
I guess I'm confused. I see where we have the six oh nine one oh two, the post bid schedule. And then we have bids from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven different contractors, is that correct?
That is correct.
Hold, yeah.
And. Yeah, it's a little, it's just a little confusing. So what is, where did the six oh nine one oh two come from?
So it's, I'm so sorry. I just had that up and I accidentally clicked out of it. It just seemed wrong to get back.
I, I see it's on the post bid schedule B.
So if you look at the bid tally relation that has the numbers from all of those various contractors, you'll see that the lowest bid is that four hundred ninety five thousand, five hundred forty seven dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you compare that to the post bid schedule B, that is shown as the construction contract one. And then everything above that is other soft costs. Like there's a five percent contingency there. And then the engineering services as well as an equipment line item. So that is just all of the other costs associated with the project.
Okay, I, I'm following.
That's, that makes very clear sense once it's explained.
Yeah. It's easy to see what's, you know. But individually, the little market can always piece this together.
So there were seven bids total with the lowest bid being four ninety five, nine forty seven.
Correct. And typically, the bid is awarded to the lowest bidder. This is a construction company that the engineering firm was not super familiar with. So they wanted to do a little of extra work, call and check it, make sure they had good preferences and that sort of thing. And so far, all of that, you know, they've received good indications that they are in fact a, you know, the company in one place.
So.
Any question?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the six and nine one oh two from the tip funds for the sewer disinfection system?
I say move.
Okay. All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's not a stapler in here, is it?
It's on paper clips.
It has, but if you want to.
So the nature of consideration of the Greenberg County Free Road project payment for the last week waiver request. I want you to.
Good morning.
Morning.
So this is the waiver request for the Greenberg County Get Ready Rockin' Project. So the request that we've been working on for the commission and the state to find some time to get it placed. So that didn't put so much of a burden on the commission to pay the entire amount of these invoices upfront. So basically, this waiver request will say that state's going to cover seventy five percent of the invoice and the matching fund will be twenty five percent paid by the Greenberg County Commission. So that's what this rolls down to. So it'll just take your, your review and consideration there to see if you accept your terms within the cost share document.
I would just note that this is something because for the entire project, we've been paying, the county's been paying the full one hundred percent. So this is, this is more in line with all of the other projects that the county has received funding where there is a match. And then the state pays the amount for their, for the grant funds they've already received. And our council, Britt Ludwig and John Stumpf, have both reviewed this. And unless, Britt, unless you have any input, I would make a motion that we approve this matching fund proposal.
I think it would be appropriate to do that at this time.
As I said, the way a lot of these state things are set up, the county is the same way on the water project. The money, two and a half, but we, meaning that we put into that was paid out first before the other funds. And then this one was set up the same way. Now it's, they pay seventy five, we pay twenty five. So, okay, so better. Use our number, it protects our money, so. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the economic development, the upgraded program, upgraded allocation?
So move.
All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number four. Consider request from Greenberg County Day Report to apply to the Community Corrections Grant from the Division of Justice in the amount of two hundred and sixty three thousand dollars.
This, this grant is one of the operational grants that the Day Report Program applies for and has received annually. It has been reviewed. And I would make a motion for us to approve the submission of this grant for the Day Report Center.
All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, consideration, consider the request from the Greenberg County Day Report to apply for the JRI grant from the Division of Justice in the amount of ninety four thousand dollars.
And this is a second grant, also an operational grant that the program applies for and has been fortunate to receive. Has it, has it, in fine, okay. I would make a motion pending approval, final approval from council for the submission of the grant application when that is done.
These two grants primarily paid for payroll and things.
Correct. It's the operations and it's, these two grants fund the entire program.
So do we have a motion to, we have a motion to, all those favor approving the JRI grant. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
To consider the application for the Department Interior Federal Grant for slip-on tanker units to five local fire departments, non-matching, non-matching requirement.
Where is that at?
I don't think he's.
He's not ready. Here says not ready, so. Don, you got more information on that?
Yeah, just a little bit. Thank you. Sorry about that. Application's not ready, unfortunately. I received two more documents from fire departments over the weekend past the deadline, but we're going to try to get them in. Long story short, it's a twenty million dollar funding availability from the Office of Wildland through the Department of Interior for slip-on tanker units. They anticipate awarding a hundred awards. Twenty-five of those are going to be reserved for consolidated applications, which ours will be. So in the process of getting that done, I anticipate having it done by the end of the week. And I will give each one of the commissioners a packet to look at, which will include all of the documentation. So that at our next commission meeting, we can hopefully approve that because let's do it even on that day.
Yep.
So Mark and Hamrick have been more than instrumental in getting it started. And so that's kind of where it stands.
So right now, with the additional information you've received, it'd be seven fire departments?
Yeah, seven fire departments. There's a, it's a, there's no matching required on behalf of the county. And they anticipate a ninety day processing time and awards to be, the recipients to be notified sometime between sixth June and fifteenth September of this year. So Frankie Jones and I have been working on, I've got four quotes from different vendors and he and I have just put our heads together coming up with what we think is going to work best for the applications for the seven fire departments. And.
So it's due on the twenty-sixth, is that correct?
It's May eighth.
Right. This year says the twenty-sixth by eleven fifty-nine.
Okay.
So I'll have everything so that we hopefully.
So do we table this?
It's pretty much just the push button that way. We can ta, we can table it or we can approve it pending final review of council and commission.
So.
I would make a motion that we approve this grant application pending final review of council and the commission once all the information is prepared for submission.
All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would also make note just to, for clarification for anyone that's listening or watching that this, the fire departments have to have appropriate trucks to be able to carry the slip-on tankers. So that is why it does not, at this point, point, does not cover all of the fire departments in the county because of that requirement for a vehicle for utilization of that slip-on tanker.
Exactly.
All right. And next is also nine one one. Consider appointments of members to the Greenberg County nine one one advisory board. I'll meet you again.
Yes, sir. Thanks. As you may recall, I sent an email out to you folks back in January. As we are required by state code to have an active nine one one communication advisory board since we are in the nine one one system. So I'm kind of get, trying to get that spun up. I submitted some names for those folks to fill in the spots that are required by state code. And we're planning to meet quarterly. Right now, we plan to meet at the nine one one center in the conference room, which I think is kind of appropriate. And apparently this was done prior to my arrival and then for some reason it stopped being done. So we're going to start it back up. So we're playing by the rules, so to speak. So our funding is, will continue. So I present those names to you for your review and approval. And if you so approve, then I will notify those folks again. And I anticipate having our first meeting in March.
All these folks that you have listed have.
Yeah.
Have.
Yes, I called everyone personally. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that, you know, we're only required to have one representative for the fire departments. But I, I elected to have one from the east and one from the west. Hopefully covered, so that's why there's a setting person under fire.
And I would just make note, was there, or has it been changed out? Yeah, it says for a three-year term. The only, the only change I would make in, in just this wording would be that the, at least the county representative would be at the discretion of the commission with, because our committee appointments are updated every year annually. So, which we've already appointed Commissioner Holiday to this with knowing that, you know, you are working on this for it to come forward. But just have a note in there in some language of that, that, that could change.
Okay.
Not that, so once you offer that, just in the clarification.
Okay.
I agree.
You made a motion then?
Yes, I will make a motion for approval of the reinstatement of the nine, emergency nine one one advisory board and the appointments as presented.
Do I have to say? All those favor signify.
Is it a jury? I don't remember that matter.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consider request from Greenberg County Homeland Security Emergency Engineering Office to apply for the twenty twenty-three EMPG grant in the amount of one hundred eight thousand, one hundred fifty-two, fifty-one.
That's. Um, Dawn, do you, the EMPG, do you have anything or do you want?
It's, it's in the file down there and it has been reviewed by council. And that is their typical operational one for the Homeland Security Office, not the nine one one. So it's a little separate. So this is the one that covers Paula's salary.
Yeah. And it is.
It's in that folder he's got. I just made the one copy.
But it's for, it's for year.
You can look right there. That's what I'm saying. Look in there, there's a note at the top of that one.
So, yeah, this is the twenty twenty-three, the county gets reimbursed for salary and wages for the Homeland Security Office. This grant is submitted every year through Homeland Security for reimbursement. So we have to show the, show the payout and salaries of that.
Said on the, well, the amount we paid out. So, all right. So we have a motion to approve the. Fund for the grant.
I say move.
Sorry. Yes, I say move.
All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So the location, the rent does get reimbursed.
Is this the amount total we got for eighteen months?
No.
Well, that's the total amount we got.
Oh, no, 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 there's more.
That, no, we found out the rest of that wasn't supposed to go in that account.
Oh, that's correct.
So that is the correct amount.
Thank you.
Yes, that is the correct amount. And I have all the documentation. We will have to transfer that other one out.
Yeah.
Right now, I just left it for now until we get a chance to, to start writing checks.
All right. Confirm separation of one of Bethany for debt. And the Greenberg County Prosecutor's Office effective January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Hire date was eight one, two thousand sixteen. So we have a motion to approve the separation point.
So move.
All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Number ten, confirm retirement of employee, employment of Scott Shepherd from the American Sheriff's Department effective January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Hire date, February sixteenth, two thousand five. So we have a motion to accept the retirement.
How many that we accept the retirement of Scott Shepherd? Effective one twenty-seven, twenty-five.
Okay. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Consideration of and approval of distribution of funds to fire slash emergency emergency agencies serving Greenberg County.
Yes.
And all of our house has been said.
So this bill was passed in the legislating session last year and we, we finally were able to get some guidance on the use because there was no information that was sent with the funds that came. And actually, the state added money from a totally another grant. And so it was very, very confusing. But at any rate, these funds can be used in any way to support fire and EMS and at the commission's discretion. So as the other fire department and the other money that came from the legislature, it was divided up equally between the fire departments. So I would make a motion that we do the same thing. Divide the fifty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents equally among the fifteen fire departments and three EMS agencies. So that would be a total amount of three thousand, twenty-seven dollars and ten cents to each department, to each agency. And of course, we would have to go through the same process as previously with the agencies coming in and for getting their documentation and completing that as we did with the other funds.
Have a motion to buy the money included between the eighteen different entities. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
So just a quick discussion. So all these fire departments are confirmed, they're active. And what are, they have to be licensed, I guess, is that right, Thomas?
That, yeah.
So there's fifteen in the county?
Mm-hmm.
And then, and the information, the information that they have to sign off on meets those
or they have to agree to those requirements that they've met all of the.
Fire marshals.
Fire marshal requirements and, correct.
I'll have to type up their agreement still and get them all prepared.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll prepare that agreement and have the checks prepared and then.
Well, they have to do the agreement. They have to sign the agreements before we will do their checks.
They have to sign the agreement and then make their check.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to order further checks then at that point. Yep.
All those in favor, relation to five, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, motion for yours?
No, you have one more. You have twelve, number twelve.
Yeah.
That's what Britt's waiting on.
We, we want to get that one. Go on.
Consider the, I had our check off, checked off. Consider the, the amended nine-one-one ordinance for publication.
I think yours got shoved in the back of that E M, that E M P G folder. Cause there was two folders in yours when you flipped the papers. I think it was in the very, very back of that. It says draft across it.
There you go.
And of course, Britt's on here to speak.
Britt, are you still with us?
Yep, still here. Um, I put a copy of the draft in each of your folders at the very back.
Um, Don, do you have anything? Feel free to.
Uh, Britt is gone. Uh, Jordan called me on the way down here. And, um, in section four, B is in void. Apparently, there's a line that says something to the effect of maintaining a seven-digit number. Uh, we no longer use seven digits, it's now ten. So that would be the only change that he would recommend. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I appreciate your hard work on this and, um, I'm optimistic with that. It's gonna work out.
Do you want to, Don, would you like to, um, of course, we already have this, this in place, but it is, this is a revision. Would you like to, um, provide a little, um, uh, information of one of the big, of the big reasons of why we are at the point now of having to consider this? To just, for, for information for the public?
Sure, um, but, uh, we have upgraded our communication system, both hardware and software in the nine-on-ones, our emergency communication center and all of our tower sites. So, um, this increase in funding is gonna help offset some of those costs as well as, um, just the cost of doing business on a day-to-day basis. Getting, um, you know, as you all know, it's a little expensive every month. So, um, there's not been a raised, to my understanding, uh, increase in this since nineteen ninety-five. So, um, this may, will bring up our county more into line with the standard or average throughout the state, so.
Do you know what our current fees are?
Two dollars.
Two dollars on everything?
Yes, sir.
And this, um, these fees, um, are utilized for the operation or operation of our emergency communication center. And the upgrade that we've just done is ultimately a total going to be over five million dollars. Um,
Wages.
And, um, salaries and wages of our nine-one-one dispatchers as well as, um, all of our towers that are in the county. And, um, making sure that everything is operational. So it's a significant, um, uh, significant cost to the county to make all of this work and run properly and keep upgraded. Um, and of course, since, you know, being more in line with, um, other,
Right.
um, uh, across the state, but also to make sure that the county is, is, um, getting fun, you know, getting correct funding to be able to make sure we are able to operate properly.
Absolutely.
So who is responsible for notifying all of the telephone providers that our wages?
This goes, this will be submitted, um, well, we have to do, um, Britt, do you want to explain the process, the next steps?
Um, so, uh, if, if the commission decides that, uh, they wish to publish, um, this draft with that one adjustment to section four B, the next step would be to place a class one advertisement in a county newspaper and, um, as well as all our other, uh, social media accounts and website. Um, the advertisement needs to be placed no less than thirty days prior to the meeting at which public comments will be taken on the ordinance, um, and no more than sixty days. Uh, so my suggestion would be that we, um, schedule it for that second meeting in March just in case, uh, our requests to the papers aren't in alignment with their schedule. Uh, just so we don't have to, have need to adjust those dates again. Um, so, um, and once the ordinance, uh, once you receive public comments on the ordinance and once the commission decides, uh, whether or not to pass the ordinance, if the ordinance does pass, then it is sent to the P S C. And the P S C, I believe, is responsible for notifying, um, the carriers in the area. Um, and then, uh, generally speaking, one carrier will collect on behalf of all the others. And there may be an administrative cost associated with that, um, which is to be paid for at the proceeds as well.
So I'll make a motion, we.
Oh, do we need to announce the, um, fee changes?
Well, it'll be published. You can announce them if you wish to, but, um, but they'll be published.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. That's okay. I'll make a motion that we accept the amended nine-one-one ordinance for publication, uh, after council corrects the, um, section four line item, B is in void, change seven to a ten-digit telephone number.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know when your second meeting is in March?
Will be the twenty-fifth, I believe it is.
Sixth, I think.
No, the twenty-sixth is in February.
Twenty, twenty-sixth of February.
Yeah, but in March, it's the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, March twenty-fifth.
March twenty-sixth?
Fifth, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Yeah, the Tuesday.
We'll, we'll, uh, announce that, uh, as the public, uh, hearing on the ordinance when the advertisement is placed.
And that'll be just immediately following our meet, our.
Maybe before our meeting.
Or before our commission meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
We did.
We did?
I thought it. Yeah, I read all. I was like, unless I've missed something.
I, I can't, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have anything else?
I would just announce our next commission meeting is different. It is on a Wednesday. So our next one is February twenty-sixth, which is a Wednesday at ten o'clock. So that's because of the legislative sessions you guys are gonna be in, so.
Amanda, just a second. Cassie, do you all have anything else?
They might not even be there anymore.
I think so, unless you guys have any questions for us.
No, we appreciate you joining us today.
Absolutely. Hope you guys stay safe and warm and all that good stuff.
All right, send me, uh, Britt, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, just the same, uh, sentiments from my end of the county.
Okay.
Hopefully no power outages and everyone stays safe.
They're bad. I tried to get there today, but it didn't work.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion to adjourn, all those in favor, signify the same night?
Ten forty-eight. All right, I need to hit some ends. In that one, in the other one.